Morning.
Hey, Mr. Morning.
How's it going?
Ah, it's tough, but hanging tight.
Okay. Uh, maybe we could talk about why it's tough.
Yeah, I'm going through interviews here and there.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So coding is is a difficult part, actually, because I am actually preparing for the SRI. I mean, I'm already sorry, but preparing for the SRI interviews, but all in the top companies. And you know, the coding doesn't work well with the SRI at least.
I see, I see. Um. Yeah, well, so it seems like you're. Well, I don't know, like, are you okay with like what we were doing so far at the GitHub? And, um, you know, like, are you able to do like the blind 75?
Yes, I'm there. Yesterday I did bind research, problems of bind research. So.
Okay.
There's still a long way to go, you know?
Yeah, I get it. I understand. I mean, yesterday, I mean, I was doing them too. And so I was doing them last night and trying to catch up to Karthik, who seems to have been doing the most. So let me see here, I'm gonna bring up. Well, I don't know how far he is, but like he seems to have contributed the most to like this repo. So I just wanted to go through this. So I posted some stuff here for me, and then this is Karthik's. So basically, like, he's done three so far, contains duplicated tomb, some valid anagram. Then I went ahead and I did two some, and then I also have the best time to buy and sell. So you could go to that if you wanna look through it. You know, and then also just. Yeah, like you said, just getting through like these, this, I think my plan is to try to get through this as much as I can. Like the first array version of this and then go down to link list. Then from there, go to string and tree heap stack. Just try to finish as much as I can, you know, but every night, like when I do these, I'm like, oh, my God, these things take so much time. They're like sit there and think it out. It's not easy. It's definitely not easy.
Yeah. One thing that disappointed me yesterday, I did not yesterday, Saturday, I did binary search problem like quite a lot of them. I'm talking about 17, 18. Okay. And I randomly I pick one of them and try to do it on Sunday and I could not do that. I don't know what happened. Like, okay, I knew the solution a day before, but what got changed a day after like? The problem I was doing was you know, finding element in a rotated array, rotated chart, sorted array.
Do you have the, uh, the, the number or the question from Liko?
It should be in strings or.
Strings.
Binary search, yeah, it should be in binary search.
Binary search. This one?
Not not tree, simple sorted array.
Okay, let me see.
No. I I can get it.
Okay.
This one.
Okay. Searching a rotated sorted array. All right. So.
This column has many. This column has many multiple variations. Uh, like, like, this is searching the element, right? Another variation could be finding the peak, the large or the smallest element in this area or. Find the min, uh, yeah, smallest element, largest element. Or find the element itself.
Okay. So there's an integer array num sorted in ascending order with distinct values. So there's the nums array. Prior to being passed to your function, nums is possibly rotated at an unknown pivot index. So just you have to pick some number here unknown. And then we rotate it. Do we rotate it left or do we rotate it right?
Yeah, basically swept the first element to have the last element.
Okay. Such that the resulting array is nums k, nums k plus one. Okay, so then the rotation happens. So this is k, like if this is k right here, then k should come here. Then k plus one. Then so on, all the way down to the end of the array.
Yeah.
So, so no wait, so nums of k would be seven, right? Like if we're picking random index and then seven plus one, right? Or is it index plus one? Yes, index plus one. Okay, so all right, just double checking. And then this would be the last, so six would be the last number, so seven all the way.
Seven is the last number.
Oh, I'm sorry, six is the last number, not seven. Right, cuz if we pick seven, that would be the index, then zero, one, two, four, five, six. Is that correct? Cuz this is zero, this is one. And then this would be k minus one, if we were rotating it, so this. This is how, so all right, let's see here, for example, it says zero, one, two, four, five, six, seven, might be rotated indexed three and become. So index three is zero, one, two, three, so then four, five, six, seven, zero, one, two. Okay, yeah. So two would be the last index. All right, so that's how it would look. Given the array nums after the possible rotation and integer target. Um. So target would be zero. Uh, return the index of the target if it is in nums or minus one if it is not in nums. Okay, you must write an algorithm with O log n complexity. And that's probably the hard part, right?
That's that's the hint. That's that's source login means binary search.
Binary search, correct. So you have to use some kind of. Yeah, binary searcher. So one thing I don't know about lead code, cuz I just started getting into these. But you know, like, if you're working in like the section array, right? Do they expect you to just use that data structure? Like if it says, search in a rotated sort array? Or can you use any data structures you want to solve the problem? I think like, okay.
If you click on run code, top left, bottom right corner. Yeah, click, yeah, and under the first step, task case, you can put your custom task case, first step, yeah.
Okay. So you're, you should be able to use like trees then, right? If that's the case, or you know, you can use, cuz trees give you login kind of runtime, right?
Searching, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But then building a tree will cost you, will give you like. And login, then searching login is like.
Hmm.
And login plus login.
Right. Um, so what are some things that are login in terms of a data structure? Or, you know, like, what are, what are your thoughts? Like, I guess, like, when you first think about this, like, what would you do brute force way?
So since it's disordered and it's an array and okay, the best, I mean, the brute force is.
Oh, that's right. Good point.
Yeah.
One more time here, else at this.
Yeah.
So go ahead.
So as I am working on all of all the problem I have searched on my research. So if I could figure out at any index, if I could figure out whether I have to. That's whether I have to solve the left part of the array or the right part of the index. I probably will able to cut down on my number of comparisons. Oh, and the input data set, data size as well. Uh, and here in the chat, I can clearly see it is sorted, so that's a good hint that. Definitely it has to be via via bind research. Uh. Uh, so now I do, I have to devise those if else, what will be my, my condition for comparison or moving left and moving left and right?
Yeah.
And that's.
So you have, see, yeah, so we're depending on this being sorted.
Hmm.
So one question here is. Why did they say sorted when this isn't sorted? Or is that the expectation?
It is sorted but rotated.
Sorted but rotated, okay. So that's always going to be the case, right? Like, once we get, like, all right, so it's gonna be sorted up to a certain point.
And 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 there will be a one as case, imagine an array of two elements. The first element being three and the second one being one. So three, one, it looks like a descend, this, uh, descended sorted. But in a way, it is also rotated, you know? Like one, three now done into three, one, so. That case also you have to handle.
I see. Okay, so let's see here, I grab some stuff. So for example. Three, one, and you rotated because it could be one, three.
Yeah.
And then the other is four, five, six, seven, zero.
Zero, one, two.
Two, so this is actually one, two, uh, four, five.
You forgot that you, but yeah.
Okay. These are rotated.
Yep. So.
Okay. So let's type some notes here, just so you remember what we're trying to do. So we're trying to O log n. And then we're using binary search.
Yes.
Brute force. So. Let's see, we want to return. Index of the target.
Yes.
If it's none, right?
Else minus one, else return minus one.
Else minus one. Equals zero. That would be inside four. So like, number one, right, let's just try to solve the problem, right? So you're saying, well, in my mind, if I were to do a brute force way, I would probably just search the array, right? I would just say, okay.
Yes.
Um. You know, binary search is just basically like, pick an entry point, compare the left. Compare, you know, to the value or compare the right to the value, then if it's, uh. If it's not the value, then if it's lower than the value, then basically like, you know, you wanna keep looking left. But if it's, I mean, if it's lower than the value, you wanna keep right. But if it's.
Yeah.
Greater than the value, then you wanna keep looking left and so on, until you find that value. And that would be the O log n part. So is that the hard part for us to implement that part? Or, I mean, like, okay. So let's go look up binary search. So. What's your favorite language?
My noise Python.
Python, all right. So here's Python. So it says, check the base case midpoint is equal to one plus the r minus one, what is r? So to get the array, we get. Let's see here, the. Index, the length of the array, and then x is a target.
Yeah, in this case, we are comparing the left, right and mid elements, that's it. And that, based on the results, we are moving the left and right pointers.
Right. So does it matter that it's rotated? Um, I think it does.
So in this binary search, it that way is sorted, not rotated. So it's, so you can tell whether to go left or right by looking at the medium, mid element. Yeah, but. You know, if the element is greater, then you will definitely move forward, not, not care about the part before the mid element.
Right, right, exactly.
So you will cut the array into half, so. All right. This is what I'm doing. Oh, it's a legacy one and also, okay. Uh, but what if? You know that array is rotated, in that case, you can't just compare the left and right elements with the mid.
Yeah, that's, okay, so we're almost there, I think, right? So like, basically, we know that the array is rotated. Maybe our job is to get the array to be unrotated and then we search.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's a good one. If we can find the element where it is rotated, let's, in this case, let's, in this area, the array is rotated at three index. Uh, at at the, at the zero element or seventh element, I depend on how you are seeing it. Then you can basically see that this area can convert into two parts. So basically, one is G four, five, six, seven, another is zero, one, two. And I can basically run my research on two of them.
Correct, correct.
So it will be like two login, which is nothing but login only.
Exactly. Good job.
Right?
Yeah, so you just have to find like.
Yes, you have to find where this rotation have the pivot element, basically, pivot index. So. Yeah.
So then that would be the last one.
And pivot and finding pivot element has to be, also has to be in O one, O N, sorry, sorry, login.
Yeah, I find pivot. So let's go about this manually, like, how would we do this, right? So.
Okay.
Um, I guess one way of doing it is going through this array, right? And that would be O N, right? But let's just do it anyway, so we would say four, five, six, seven. We know that this is higher than the last value. The moment we come across a value that's lower, we know, hey, wait a minute, it might be not sorted anymore. So this could be the. The rotation point.
Yeah.
If we were to do something like a login algorithm, we could pick a point in this array. And then we could say, is this value greater than or lower than the value in front of it? And so if we assume that it should be sorted, if the value is lower for some reason, then we can say, all right, well, we know that this is, um. You know, this, so like, our expectation is that it should be higher. But if it's not, then this may be the rotation point. So let's try that like a few times. So I, I almost feel like that's, that's part of the solution. Because you were saying, like, if we have O login for just determining like whether the array is rotated. And then another O login for searching, then that would be O log and or O two login. Right, and then that's still O log n in terms of time complexity. And then in terms of space complexity, we're just doing it in place.
Yeah.
Right? So.
But obviously, yeah.
So should we just assume that this is constant time? Or do we need O N for the array itself?
Yeah, O one, yeah. Time complexity.
Yeah. Just wanna check something here. Okay, so it looks like we're the only ones today. That's all right, it's cool. Um, all right, so let's go back to this. I think we have a good idea in place. What do you think?
Yeah, I'm on the same page so far.
Okay. So let's read about binary search and how it works again, cuz I. I probably could implement this, but it could be a little early. Oh, Karthik just joined us.
Oh.
Okay. Give him a second. So, um, hey, Karthik, welcome.
Morning, guys, buddy.
No worries, we're going through, um, a question today. Um, we're going through this one, I'll put in the chat. I'll just kind of recap what we're doing. And then, um, if you want, you can kind of help out with it. One other thing too is that, um, you know, I also started submitting some of my PRs up to the GitHub. So if you have time, you know, take a look at mine. I'm trying to write mine in Python. Um, you know, because you wrote yours in Java, and so I was like, okay, well, you know, like, I could write mine in Java too, but then you already did it, so. I felt like Python would be kind of good experience for me anyway, cuz I don't have as much.
Yeah. No, I I approved the PR this morning.
Okay, cool. Excellent.
I will, I would like probably restructure that a bit, just keep Python as the top level, root level and remove your name. So that like, you know, there's unified place for everybody to merge or whatever, yeah.
Yeah. That's fine, I, because people, like, I haven't seen a lot of contributions yet. I just decided to keep everything in one folder for me. And then like, if people wanna compare it to their friend's solutions, they can do that, like, yours could be in yours. You know, and you were saying to me the other day too, right? Like, oh, well, you're just kind of like practicing in your own repo first, then you're pushing here cuz you don't want it to be public. So I was like, um, well, technically, it's fine. I mean, like, you know, you can, I think, like, if that's kind of what people wanna do, like, let them do that. You know, I'm not gonna push everybody to be in a public repo. But I just felt like it would be nice, that way, like, people can actually review your work in one area and not have to go to 10 different areas.
Yeah, no, um, um, I, for some reason, I created a private repo. But when I do that, like, the idea was like in the public repo, for me to come in without referring anything, be able to look at the problem and quickly try to solve it in 15 minutes, that that's what I'm trying to target in the public repo, you know what I mean? So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll keep it very flexible. I'll see what I can do to get my name off of it or whatever. Um, but yeah, just kind of coming back to this, we kind of jumped up to a little bit more of an advanced problem or mediumly advanced. Um, so let's take a look at it, I'll kind of give you the cliff notes here. So this one is about searching a rotated sort array, right? So the rotation happens, so the array itself is sorted. So for example, zero, one, two, four, five, six, seven, um, is rotated around a pivot index three. And it be, still becomes four, five, six, seven, zero, one, two. So you're gonna get this as an input, you're gonna get some kind of sorted array. Um, but it's rotated around some index, it's an unknown index, right? Unknown pivot index. But your job is to basically find. Let's see where, so it says, return the index if it is inside nums. So you're gonna, so after the rotation is done, um, you're gonna get a target, like, so you're gonna get zero or you're gonna three. You have to find out if it's inside this array and then return the index of that target if it's in the array or negative one, if it's not in the array. So far, so good, right? You got me?
Yeah.
Okay, so then these are examples of rotated arrays that we just put here. And then we were just kind of talking out loud and we're saying like how we would go about doing this brute force way. Um. So brute force way is just, you look for a value, um, you look for the value in the sorted array, right? Um, and then you basically, um. You know, like, say, we're looking for zero. Um, if this was sorted, right? Then we would just go and use binary search. And then we would basically be able to get that, uh, number within, um, O log and retrieval time. But because it's rotated, um, we don't necessarily know, like. You know, we don't have a sorted array. So then we were thinking like, maybe we need to also make some kind of, um, algorithm that runs in log n time, right? That's the piece here to find out where the rotation happened. So you're thinking like, okay, like, we know that this array or input is gonna be given to us. So like, one algorithm could be, um, just pick a random entry point into the array, compare it to the left index or the right index. And if it's, well, we only have to compare it to the left index, I think, because like, if the numbers are going up and we see a number that's less than the previous value, we know that it's no longer sorted. So that would be one way of determining the rotation. So if we have that plus, um, the binary search, that would be two login, which is still O login time, look, see, default. You might be muted because of your kids, I get it. If you wanna throw something in the chat, let me know.
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I was just saying, do you follow along like, like this algorithm or do you think we're kind of off? Okay, okay. All right, so then we just basically like need to. Kind of come up with something, so I almost kind of feel like it's pseudo code would be. Pick. And an entry point. Or pick midpoint. Right, that seems like a good. Point to start. Um. Is index. Last and previous index. Is value. If yes. Else, then what we wanna do is like, if it's not less than, wanna like pick another. So this is kind of like a recursive algorithm, right, Kumar?
Hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You see anything off?
Yeah. What about if the index value, okay, you. Uh, this, the very first condition, what if the element is at the beginning? I mean, the index is pointing at the zeroth element.
Okay, then, good, good point, so. Going back to this, if the rotation. Is right here.
No, 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 this, this is the sorted one, previous.
Right here.
Yeah, if, yeah, at four, yeah, if you up, your pointer is at default. In that case, you are comparing with the previous index, the previous index will be like out of bound. Or like what, in Python, you can refer the last elements via negative indexes. So minus one will point to the last element in this area. So.
Right.
Right, so in this case, your case pass, I mean, four. Is. I don't know, it, it doesn't pass, it's okay. So your else condition will be executed here, because the element is, previous is two. Is smaller than. is smaller than two, no. Okay. The. Oh. It will, I uh, we don't need to check them. Yeah, previous element will be will work for this if L condition, right?
Yeah, because I'm not saying like go anywhere like, you know, outside the array bound, right? I'm just saying, oh, wait.
Even if it goes, even if it goes, it 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 will still work.
Yeah, you still have to like. Yeah, so because ultimately, if you pick a index, right, like, let's say it's just four. There's nothing here on the left. So it's just going to say um if true, well, we have to have a, so one thing we're missing here for sure is like, we have to like, in a recursive algorithm, you always have to return. There has to be a way to get out of the recursion. So um, let's see here.
And oh. And, okay.
If true, so. Turn the index, not the value. So is this value like less than the previous index? And.
Uh, no, 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 before that. How do you, how how do you pick the midpoint?
So midpoint would be just the length of the array divided by two, kind of like here.
It plus the starting of the area.
Right.
Or or L plus R minus L by two. Uh, it. It basically R plus L by two also. Yeah. Better. So in if the element, if you're in the, if you are a contain only one element four, then the mid will be like what?
So.
You minus zero point five is like negative. Is zero basically?
Yeah, there is no, it would still be index of zero. So you're going to get this.
And. If index, then it, okay, so made, so L R made they all point to the same index. If index value less than the previous index, this is not the case, it will come on the else. And else will.
It cannot, okay, got it, got it, got it, okay. So is the index value less than the previous value? Um. Maybe is index value. So I guess like we need like some kind of case in here that says um, is there a left value?
And because when we also think about the base, base cases, when I input size is very, very small, right?
Hmm.
So here, if the array size is one or zero empty array. Yeah, just 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 trying ideas.
Yeah, of course, of course, if the array is empty. And. If there is a left value, then um, if there is not.
If there's only one element, then we can compare and return in just O one. That's a.
If length of array is one and just return the index.
No, not return, because the element also need to be equal to the tag. Equal to what we are searching.
Right.
Yeah, if array one, array zero equal equal to. Maybe a touch, sorry. Operation will be better here. Yeah. Target or search, yeah. Then return, yeah, zero minus one.
Yeah.
Uh, not the element, you have to return the index.
So, okay, sorry, thanks. This would be the index.
Cool, yeah. Yeah. Now in our loop, there will always be minimum, minimum of two element.
Yes. So if we get past these two cases here, then it's just going to say, all right, is the index value um?
Yes.
Less than the previous index, if true, then turn the index. Else, pick another midpoint. Okay, so let's um. So I, what I want you to do, even though this is a fun problem to do, I I think like, because we have to like, keep to time.
Um, yeah, it will take more time. Actually, I was about to say.
Yeah, let's go ahead and um. So what I'd like you to do is just kind of work on this problem and then submit a PR and then I can look at it tonight. Um, and then Karthik can also look at it, um, and some other people can look at it. And then we can see like how far you got, even if it's not correct, or even if you're just kind of still stuck. We'll just work on it like in the background. Um, and uh, you know, we can bring this up again, uh, you know, another session. But good try, and this is good. I mean, like, I like exactly how we did it, like, we're just kind of breaking it down, thinking about like possible solutions and then working on it. So good job, um, and good job for like, you know, showing up. That's half the battle. Um.
Yeah. Uh, I I have some interviews during this time in following days, so probably I may not be able to uh uh, come every day, but I will try whenever I can.
Yeah, yeah, of course, like, it's not necessary to be here every day, like, you just need to, like, I think, like, if anything, just contribute. And then um, like, I want to keep these sessions. Yeah, just kind of like, yeah, just for me, like, I want to keep everybody like thinking about like these things. So here's where we are, kind of coming back to this, right? Like, we're right now, like, just getting familiar with language. So I think like for me, like, the hardest parts so far, we're just remembering like syntax from Python. And then, yeah, of course, like, you know, um, writing like this, thinking out the algorithm and pseudo code. But like, you know, I was struggling for a little while because I forgot, like, I guess Python three introduces types. And I kept getting an error and I was like, where do I get the type from? And I found out, okay, it's from this typing library.
It's because you are using Python less than three point seven, right?
Hmm.
If you use higher version three point nine, you don't need to include this from typing import list.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, that was something I didn't know. So I'll put a note for this.
Yeah.
Um, let's put here.
Python to three point nine, that would. Or three point seven above, I think that's the minimum word, yeah. And if you're new to Python, I I advise you, there's a one, one very good channel, actually. When I say new to Python, I mean the new features of Python.
Yeah, yeah, I'd need it because um I'm just kind of going off old notes that I've had from Python.
The guy is really good and subscription.
Cristiano Ronaldo.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, you guys carry on, I I'll, I'll, when I get it, I'll drop it.
Yeah, no, like, I I wanted to keep these sessions short. So like, we started at seven thirty, like, it should just be thirty minutes ultimately, up to an hour, but like, um, now I want to give enough time for us to talk about anything else, you know, so it's good that we started this problem. Um, and I think like we have a basic algorithm here. I just want to like spend some time writing the implementation, but I know that's going to take us more time. So I feel like let's do this outside the scope of this um review session and then compare each other's solution. So we're almost there, though. I kind of feel like if we write the implementation part, the details, and that's where we'll have to like really test this, but I think we're almost there. Um, but yeah, so just reiterating here, like um, language, uh, you know, the other one that I was thinking of doing was C plus plots, because I know many people here expressed that they wanted to do Python. So I was thinking, maybe I'll write in C plus plus. Um. But that said, you know, like, I'm kind of thinking like, all right, well, does everybody here know C plus plus? Or is that going to be like, you know, a pain point if we you know, have so many different languages? So I think um Python's a good, you know, thing for now, and then everybody can like just contribute with their own name, and then we can kind of check each other's solutions if we want. Um, or contribute directly to that person's repo if we want to. You know, and um, there's multiple ways we can evolve this. I don't think it needs to just be the current structure that it is right now. It can be whatever. Um, the yeah, and then the last thing that I wanted to say was um. So we're going to have this mock interview um coming up. You know, so I think like, let's see here, so where are we, where are the doors today? So we're gonna have a mock interview on Thursday. So I'm going to just say like, you know, don't feel scared by it. Um. Just come, it's going to be exactly like what we were doing. We'll just allow more time to like actually do these kind of problems. But in that, it's going to be more just um not just the the lead code stuff, but it's also going to be like implementing stuff from scratch. So try to remember how to like implement an array or, you know, um. I think we'll keep it simple, link list. Just come in with those basic ideas and go, okay, like, if I say, all right, I want you to write this from scratch. Make sure you can do at least that, because I feel like in the interviews that I've been to as well, sometimes like if the interviewer wants to ask a lead code style question, um, and they're not Google, right? Like, they're just like a regular company, like a lot of times, like, they'll just kind of do like the very basics. They'll just want to see, okay, can you implement a hashtag? Can you implement, you know, a link list, you know, or can you implement an array?
I would ask, yeah.
Hmm, so let's get that out of the way. I want to get like the basic, basic stuff out of the way, so that way it's not a pain point, you know? Um.
Yeah.
And then lastly, also just pay attention to the standard library. So I may ask, and you guys can ask too, and I should just review it anyway, like, what are the available um you know, methods for, you know, a link list? So if I ask you like, you know, what kind of things can you do? Um, you know, or if I pick something like from Python or Java, right? I might say like, you know, like, what does um? What does the copy function do or something like that? So. Again, just like the basics here, like, try to get through like this part, because that's more important for now. And then like in month three and month four, right? Like, it could be like more, like, month five is actually where we really, really, really focused on lead code and trying to do better than what we're doing right now. But I think we can make a plan to get through at least most of this into month five, and then we can go into harder week code if we want. Okay.
Solid plan.
Any um, any other questions here?
Nothing from my side.
Okay. Karthik, you good? Yeah, just keep it up, man. Like, I I know, again, like, you're busy with the kids. Um.
I'm good, man. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll keep pushing and like, you know, approving the PRs, yeah.
All right, sounds good. I'm going to try to like focus again to our block tonight, just get through some more. And then um meet up with you all tomorrow. Uh, so it's Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday. But I'm going to make Monday like even more optional, I feel it, or I'm going to make one of those days optional. So like, you don't have to show up all three days. Um. Like, for the most part, more emphasis on just the coding part, right? Show up to the one of these days, like, if you feel like you want to discuss something, and I feel like that's really the point of this, like, just kind of like to discuss, try to get help on something. And so we'll do it for that reason, but it's not meant to like keep you guys like stuck here every day meeting up. So if you meet up every day, like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, because of the other group, the system design, take a break, right? Just take one day off for yourself. Um. And that's pretty much it, yeah. All right, I'll see you all tomorrow if I see you. And then um, keep it going. All right. Bye, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Bye.
Hmm, bye.